Hello, we are live. Welcome everyone to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We are joined today by our whole team. We have Jess and Kim and Colin and founders Amanda and Greg. What's up everybody?
Hello, hello.
Hey.
Welcome to this pre Halloween special. We will hopefully have one of our favorite friends on to join us today. We're working through a couple of tech issues, I think, on that end. Today, we're going to be talking a little bit about Grow Workspace. Maybe just for those of you who are coming in, quick show of hands. Any of you have and use Grow Workspace with your Get Oiling account? It's probably like almost all of you, right? We love them. We love the content that they create and how easily and seamlessly it plugs right into the Get Oiling system. You can learn more about them on the Partner section of our website and you can actually get started with them at getoiling.com/grow. So Chrissy gets here, hopefully she can. We're going to chat with her about about some new updates that are coming down the pike for for Grow Workspace, what it means to their member base. And of course, there's a great deal of crossover here. We'll talk to you guys a little bit more about Grow Workspace on this this edition as well. And we're going to show you, for those of you who were here last week, we showed you some exciting new updates. We are continuing to build on an update that we shared, but we want to make sure that you guys know how to use it and what it is. And we'll show you that and then we'll get into some website reviews. So I guess let's um, I'll get into a Grow Workspace spiel here. If you guys can maybe check in and see if Chrissy's on the way. I think there may be some-
I don't see her in the list yet.
Yeah, I think there may be some weather where she's at or something. So I think power is out. So we'll see. So just so you guys know, Grow Workspace, they've been around just about as long as we have, I think. I think that started up around the same time. Chrissy and Claire created team tools and resources for sharing. And this eventually became something that grew to such demand that it became offered to Team YL. A lot of similar stories in our space. That's kind of what happened here with with Get Oiling as well. We have for the past couple of years now linked arms and worked together to actually deliver their content through our system. So for you guys who are, you know, maybe you're brand new, or maybe you understand that being Professor Oils is not the most profitable way to duplicate a young living business, you know that when you use their content, you can plug it straight into our system and save yourself a ton of time. But for those of you who don't know, they have an incredible library of these bundles that have sway presentations, text and email campaigns that plug directly into the Get Oiling platform. I have for my clients where we work one-on-one on strategy and duplication, we actually use some of those bundle resources as teaching and learning tools inside of Vaults. We've talked about that a little bit as well. Showing you a lot of different ways over the past couple of years, how you can use their content inside the Get Oiling platform. So we're big fans of theirs and we like to think that's super mutual. And we are excited to share with you them. And of course, if Chrissy is still able to join us today, we're happy to have her come and chat. Otherwise, we'll come have a party another day. But but yeah, show me in the chat here for you guys that are here. Are you are you fans of Grow Workspace? Are you using them? And what is the thing that you love the most about using your Grow Workspace account and those bundles that they have there? What is it doing for your business? For those of you who are here who use it, just to let people know? And and again, for you guys, the link is getoiling.com/grow. And you can actually get a get an exclusive link there with a with a discount, I think, for an annual membership. Let's see, Theresa, Cassandra says, oh, these are flowing in now. I love Grow Workspace. I love to be able to not have to create content from scratch. That's such a huge, huge point there. Love Grow Workspace. I need to utilize it better. It's an easy button. Let's see, use a monthly newsletter and have exported other classes to use as campaigns. I love it. We love we love to use their content for courses. Not sure how to share them compliantly in Get Oiling. Awesome, awesome. One-stop shop for postcards, classes, newsletters, all things oily information. I see this a lot. You're using them, but not to the full ability. And we're gonna, hey, hey, look who's here. I can talk to you guys a little bit about some ways you can utilize it in the platform as well. But first, let's hear from founder Chrissy. Hey, Chrissy.
Hey, I made it.
Excited to have you here. Welcome. So I want to flip over to speaker view so everybody can see you when we're chatting. So so tell us first, super glad to have you here. Tell us about a little bit about Grow Workspace for people who don't know yet.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Chrissy Chin, Young Living Gold, one of the co-founders, creators of Grow Workspace. If you have never heard of it before, that's okay. Really, it was created and designed to help me build my own living business. I'm always looking for ways to save myself time, to be more efficient, because I like to do fun things and I don't want to spend it all my time doing work. So I'm always learning how I can be more strategic, more intentional to save myself time and build bigger, better, faster, right? So built Grow Workspace and then launched it to the Young Living world. And so what we do over there is just create resources and give you business training to help you rank up faster, to help you build your business in a way that it fits and is aligned with you. And so every single month, we create new content, whether it's classes to use to teach people about products or, you know, various things, or maybe fun little games that you can play with your members to get them learning about oils and interacting. We create newsletters every month. We love putting our content into Get Oiling so that you guys can literally take a link, plug it into your Get Oiling and poof, the content just magically appears. And you're like, oh, my gosh, I have a full-blown texting campaign or email campaign or newsletter that literally within seconds you upload it, you copy the link, put it in and upload it, and you can modify it if you want. But so we're just here to basically make your life a whole lot easier. That's the mid-long story.
Yeah, that is it in a nutshell. So for you guys who are already using us, this is your cheat code. As I think someone said in the comments here just a bit ago, it's it is your easy button, your cheat code to not having to be the expert of experts so that you can spend more time just pointing, clicking and pointing so people can serve themselves. That's so cool. So we are always hearing about how happy our members are for being able to plug and play content. You guys are making some some updates to your platform, though, into the way that your membership works. So tell us a little bit about that. What's coming up for you?
Oh, my gosh, I'm so excited. I'm like between like everyone on the team now. We've got graphic designers and content creators and web people and so much support. And we're all just back here like, oh, my gosh, we gotta do this. We gotta do this. Oh, can we do this? Can we give them this? And like the the our brains are just exploding with the ideas that we have to be able to bring you guys amazing content in an amazing way. And we're also getting a little bit anxious because we're like, November 1st is supposed to be launch day. And here I am technically with no internet because we lost power, but my generator kicked on. And I'm like, all right, I'm coming in for my phone. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, I'm gonna have to shift and do all these things maybe offline to get you guys or to get everything up to par for you guys. So huge things coming. Before we technically still now, we do a free week trial to give people a little experience of what Grow Workspace is, you know, when you join with that monthly or annual membership, you get a handful of classes, you get a little bit of business training to kind of get your feet wet and dive in. And you get to try that for seven days. We are taking that away. And like, that sounds horrible, but it's actually amazing because instead of just a trial, we're going to be launching a free account. And so that content, those, you know, five basic amazing starter classes and content that you need to just get your business launched right off the bat to teach people the basics of Ning Shuret or Thieves or Oils or Why Young Living? And then business training, that's all going to be free. So imagine the people on your team that are using that excuse, I don't have money to invest in something like Grow Workspace. They get a free account. And so they can literally launch and build a business with a free account. So that's something that's really, really exciting and happening. And then the other thing is that we are, you guys are getting all the details. So this is like privileged information. So what we're doing is we are now going to be opening up, we're going to be basically revamping the plans. If you are on any, you know, the founding partners, the pro, the premium, if you have any of those, you're going to be grandfathered in. And all of the content that we have is going to be unlocked to you. And you're going to pay the same price that you pay now. So if you're not a premium member right now, sign up for it like today or tomorrow before the first because you will be grandfathered in and you will literally get all of the content, all of the trainings, all of the classes, everything that we have literally with that payment. So the payment structure will be changing. It will be increasing on the November 1st because you will you will get everything, which is three years worth of content. Plus, if you like join the annual, that's a whole nother year of content you're going to be getting. So the value is amazing. So jump in now. You'll technically be on your free week trial through November 1st. So you could check it out technically for free and decide even now before, you know, you can see everything. So that's really exciting. What else? We are launching an affiliate referral program. So that for our Platinum members. So if you are, again, if you join us premium, you know, today, tomorrow, you are going to be upgraded to Platinum, no extra charge. That's going to allow you to become an affiliate with Grow Workspace. People have been asking for this for years. Why? Because as a leader, you want to encourage your other leaders to equip themselves with the tools and resources so they can be independent and build their own business. And so you guys already share Grow Workspace with your team. And we are in the nature of affiliate, you know, business with Young Living and giving a referral link. And so we know that's why people are like, hey, do you have that program? It's been in the making for a while. We have to, we had to figure out how to do it for the masses because we know you all want to participate. And so we've figured it out and we're going to be able to launch that as well with you guys. So it would be really cool. I don't need to give all the details, but basically you'll you'll sign up for a link. It's so super simple and easy. You'll be able to share that link. They sign up with a free account. And then when they decide they're ready for Platinum level because they're taking their business serious, you'll get 20% commission on that. And not just one time. That's like every month they're paying or every year that it renews.
Wow, okay. Excuse me while I pick my job off the floor. Are you guys getting this? I hope that you're going to getoiling.com/grow right now, right now. Because this is so huge. This is so, so, so huge to be able to get the entire past three years library of content and then to basically secure yourself in a position to where the referrals that you make add infinitum. This is, that's so huge, Chrissy. Wow. Everybody is bowing and freaking out in the comments.
I love it. I love it. I mean, we just, you know, I'm like gonna get chills and hope I don't get too emotional talking about it. But we just want people to be successful. We want them to have what they need so that there's no excuses. As long as you're willing to put in the work to get the message out there, you have what you need to do it. And, you know, if you're like, hey, I can't afford Grow Workspace, you know, find the budget for it so that you can get the affiliate program so that you can then pass that on to others. And then in return, you can get your membership paid for, right? And then some. It's not a product, it's not an account credit that you're getting. Like, it is going to your PayPal account, right? You can use it for whatever you want. So I hope that people just take advantage. Oh, I forgot to mention, this is a big thing. It'll be on, it'll be on the page. There are so many little details, you guys, that I know I'm leaving out, but you'll you'll find out and you'll get them. But with every person that does join as an affiliate, we are donating a dollar to the Young Living Foundation. So just by signing up and having the ability, we're going to give back. We're going to donate to the foundation and we're super, super excited about that.
That's amazing. Oh, my goodness. And you guys, if you're if you're on the fence right now and you're wondering whether or not this is something you should just go ahead and get done, understand that we have only scratched the surface in terms of the trainings that we've offered and in terms of how you utilize. I think I see what so many people say. And before you came on the call today, we were talking about you guys and chatting with folks who are your members who work with us. And and one of the things that they say is that I have it. I know I don't, I don't make the most of it. There's so much there. And we've we've done trainings, guys. If you look on our YouTube channel, youtube.com/getoiling, we teach you how to make funnels with their sways, you know, how to embed a sway on a page. You can embed the sway files from their bundles into your your online classes so that your member education becomes a self-reference library instead of you having to look for a link, right? Like, there is so much there and and time is money, right? Time is money. And how much time do you spend as a young living distributor educating your people on oils when somebody else could do it for you, right? And maybe maybe even better if you're brand new. That's a huge like breath of fresh air. It's a sigh of relief, right? So, oh, my God, that's incredible. We got a couple of questions coming in. When does the affiliate kick in? So if you if you want to be an affiliate, maybe you're already a premium member or you will be a premium member when that kicks in.
Yeah, so we are hoping to launch the the new site, Grow 2.0. It's going to look totally different. It's going to feel different, but it's going to be, it's going to be so much better. We are hoping to launch that to our existing members, kind of as a soft. We're hoping to do it already, but we're like still behind the scenes like, oh, my gosh, let's do this. Okay, we have to get that coded. So so many things, right? It's a never-ending list. It's like when I decorated my house or did my office, I was like, oh, let's do the living room a little bit. Oh, now the kitchen is open to the living. Now we gotta do the kitchen. Like, you guys, that's happening with the Grow Workspace website. We think of one thing and then we're like, oh, wait, but can we can we give them this and this way to make it easier? They're like, yeah, we can, but that's going to take another day. Like, okay, well, let's do it. So when your account gets switched over, which at the latest, it will happen on November 1st, we are, we are sticking to that. The affiliate program will be available. You'll be able to see that banner that says Affiliate Partners Program. You click on that, literally click on the link and put your name, your email, your PayPal email, password. That's it. And you're good. And then you have your link to share. In terms of, I don't know if you're also referencing to maybe when you're paid out. Again, these details will be on that page. After this, I'm literally recording the video to to tell you guys about all the details to put on that page. But so it's basically how Young Living works in terms of paying that out. So, you know, the month of, let's say, December, let's say likely, you know, you'll share your link December, or no, November. November is the next month, right? Let's not get too far. We're skipping November, apparently. Like scared of November. We're just skipping it. Okay, no, November. If someone joins with your link to the free account and then they decide, yes, I need that Platinum plan. They upgrade, their payment goes through in November. You will get paid out on December 20th. So the 20th is going to be our official payout day. So anything that happens in the previous calendar month, just like Young Living does, will be paid out that next month.
Okay, okay, that's awesome. If you're on the annual premium package already, we won't see a price increase, correct?
Nope.
Grandfathered in. Getoiling.com/grow. Get over there and get it.
Oh, the other cool thing is that, so we've got English, US market English. We've got US market Spanish. That library is growing and we have Canadian content. We now have, you will be able to, when you log into your workspace, that first page, you guys who are members now, before we make the switch, will have access to US, English, Spanish and Canada. And you may be thinking like, I don't know anyone that speaks Spanish right now, or I don't have any Canadian members, but you may in the future. I seen Nina says yay for Spanish. So you guys are going to get access to all of those. And you literally click on US English and it takes you into your US English workspace. And you just see the US English, you know, click back, click into Spanish, you just see Spanish. There's a search bar. You can literally search Get Oiling and all of the classes and content that have Get Oiling resources, they will show up. Like, it's super cool and intuitive. But that's another thing that is grandfathered in. You guys are going to keep access to English, Spanish and Canadian content, whether you need it or not. Moving forward, people will have the option to choose which market they want and then add on other markets if they want that content. So that's another big reason to jump in now, even if you don't have Spanish-speaking people yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, yet, or Canadian members yet. I know you will at some point.
You will, absolutely. Count on that. All right. So Kim asks, if we have materials off of Grow on our websites, do we need to subscribe to the service in perpetuity in order for these to be accessed? Or do they move to our platforms or savable on on PCs? I think this is if you already, like, if you purchased it, if you had access to it, do you keep it?
Yeah, so tech, so yes and no. It depends on how you've acquired the content. So if you've paid for classes, you know, through our à la carte system or bought bundles, then that's lifetime access. As our memberships, think of that like Netflix. I was like, should we use the Netflix analogy? They're like, I don't know. And I was like, maybe not. Okay, I'm using it anyway. So like whenever Netflix, you get access to everything, but once you cancel your membership, you lose access to that content. So unless you have paid for it through one of those à la carte shops or things like that where you have lifetime access, you will lose content. And per our terms and conditions, if you don't have access to the content in your workspace, then you don't have the legal rights to use it.
Okay. All right. So just make sure that you have access to it in your workspace if you're going to use it anywhere, right? Does that that sound about right? If it's in your workspace, you're able to use it? Oh, I'm sorry. You broke up there for a second. What'd you say?
That's okay. I was gonna say, so grab the premium.
Yeah.
Get a few people to sign up using your referral link and you're you're paid for, right? As long as they're there. And so you've got it for free.
There you go. And and someone had asked the difference between premium and Platinum. It sounds like if you're premium now, you will become Platinum. Platinum is what you guys are moving toward and you'll get grandfathered in as Platinum if you're premium before the first, right?
Yeah, exactly. So basically, you know, from the monthly standpoint, the difference is that if you join now with premium, you'll be paying about half the price.
Okay, okay.
You'll get what Platinum offers. Absolutely.
Awesome, awesome. All right. So I don't want to keep you on forever. We keep the Q and As going forever. If you guys have specific questions for Grow Workspace or Grow Workspace team, what is the best way for them to get in touch with you guys?
Gosh, support at Grow Workspace. Although if it's not, you know, life-threatening, must-know now, the inbox is pretty busy. But you guys, if you have questions, you know, ask us, you know, if you're worried about, you know, not getting your question answered in a quick enough time. Again, we still have the free week trial so you can sign up for your premium membership and you'll technically have seven days to try it out. So you'll you'll experience that flip and that switch to Platinum and get to experience Platinum in that time and be able to cancel if you want to. But you're not going to want to.
No, you're not. You're not gonna want to, you guys. And you guys have a Facebook group as well, right?
Yep. So exactly. So VIP Facebook group, thousands of people in there. I think I just looked. We have 6,900-ish people in there. You guys, that's how many people are using Grow Workspace at this level. So thousands of people that work with each other in there. We put ideas in there. People share their ideas and how they're marketing and using the content, the this or that. We rolled out our our first November resource that we were creating. We rolled it, we literally were like, drop the website, get this resource out because people need it now because it involves educating on the holiday catalog. And that's rolling back out, what, November 9th, I believe? And so we wanted to give you the resource to be able to get people re-excited about those products so they're ready to buy. So we released that early. I don't remember what I was going to say about it.
Well, we did, we got a little reminder in here from Heather in the in the chat. There are AFT sessions that happen live in the Grow Workspace Facebook group as well. So it's not just the support and the insights and the what's working now with marketing with 6,000-plus people who are using this. You've also got AFT sessions live in there as well. It's it's so huge, you guys. It's really, it's a kind of a no-risk thing, right? You you go ahead and and secure yourself in this grandfathered position right now. And you've got a week to decide whether or not it's for you to get over into the community, ask all your questions. And if I were you, no matter where you are, I would take advantage of this. We did have a couple of questions come in, you know, for like different markets, different languages. You guys are probably continually working on expanding that. But but for someone who is, let's say, for instance, Kim, who is in the YL Africa market, you know, are you seeing, are you seeing people who are in markets that are not, you know, primarily US and Canada, which is where most of your content is now? Are you seeing folks who are getting memberships there because they're, you know, prospecting and have teammates in the US? Or like, how do you see that working right now?
Yeah, absolutely. We do have people in other markets, Malaysia, UK, Australia, I mean, kind of all over the place. You know, there is a little bit of tweaking that might have to happen if your market, if you can say or can't say certain things. You know, there's quite a discrepancy between what we can say in the US than what we can say in Canada. So we have a specialized Canadian person that takes the content, goes through it and says, all right, we can actually say this, this and this. Let's change the language. So, you know, you might have to do that. So it is helpful to know, you know, what what that looks like, compliance looks like in your area. But, I mean, there's so much content in there that, you know, you're still going to save yourself a ton of time by having those resources and modifying them. If there's anyone in here that is from a different market, not US or Canada, definitely share with us, you know, how you're utilizing it and how much, you know, you're having having to tweak.
And and I think it would probably be the same case for maybe translating into other languages as well. There's a question about translating business, business training over to Spanish, whether or not there's going to be, you know, French options at some point. I'm sure this is something that if if you are someone who might want to share some of your own information, you guys are probably really open to that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. We are working on right now. So our Spanish content, kind of all the directions and everything, like they had said, business training is all in English. And then the content is in Spanish, mostly because our members right now that are using Spanish content speak English and just have a network of people that might prefer content in Spanish. So for someone like me that doesn't speak Spanish, you know, if I meet someone, and this has happened before, the the people that help clean our house, they they speak Spanish mostly. And so, you know, I communicated enough with Google Translate to say, here, I'll send you the information. But since it is in English, I could go find the link that I needed for, you know, the Thieves class and then send them the sway link that was all in Spanish. But we do know that it would be very helpful if we did have, you know, business trainings and more stuff in Spanish to be able to bring people on who preferred Spanish to do everything. And so we are in the process of building the team enough to support that and get everything translated. So we're super excited about that. So if you have a network where you you know that would be really valuable, reach out to us, you know, and connect with us so that we can, we can talk and brainstorm.
Definitely. And I mean, I really, the thinking here is, you guys, no matter what your circumstance is, if you would like something in another language, if you would like content for another market, the fact is, is what you have here is a library of a solid baseline, a framework to work with that you can edit if you need to. And you know what? If you don't need to, let it just save you the time and just use it as it is because it is perfectly good to go as it is. I know a lot of people, actually it's both sides of the spectrum with the clients that I work with. You know, some leaders are like, I don't edit those. Am I supposed to edit those like for the sways? And they just, they just use them as is. And then I know some people who absolutely transform them and make them their own, right? So you do have those options. So, yeah, I hope I hope that you guys go check that out. There was one question pertaining to something that you asked about whether you are, like, can you still do the trial right now? Or how does how does that work? Like, if you were to sign up right now and you want to get grandfathered in, are you going annual? What does that look like?
So there's a monthly or annual option. And the annual option is always the best option. You save, I think it's about $50, maybe just a little bit over $50 over the year. So that is the better option. Both of them have a free trial. And as I said, like, yeah, you guys will be able to check out the trial. I like had this panic moment in my brain like, oh, my gosh, when we switch everything over, will it- will it screw that up for the people that are on it? So I'm gonna run that by our web tech guy. I think it will be not a problem. And if it is right now, I'm sure he'll like do some magic behind the scenes. You know, but certainly if you had signed up for a trial and somehow it gets charged when the transition happens and you decide it is not for you, we will refund you. Like, that will not be a problem. So, but I'm gonna try and make sure that we can make that continue to work. But right now, it's free. You won't be charged, at least not even until we switch it. So go in there, check it out.
Awesome, awesome. There's one more question about sways that I wanted to run by because you guys use sways a lot. Those are on the Microsoft platform. Heidi had said that she had signed up to Microsoft to create sways. And it seems like there's a limit, I guess, to the number of sways that you can have without paying Microsoft a monthly fee. Do you find that to be true? Or is she doing something, you know, wrong? Like, how do you, like, I guess, I don't know anything about this myself.
Sure, sure. I would say contact Microsoft to ask them. But I don't believe that we are paying for it. And we have a sway for, I think, every resource, plus the Spanish, plus the Canada, right now on one sway account. And I don't think that we're paying. So your list certainly isn't exceeding our list, you know, most likely. So check, contact Microsoft and get the details on that.
Awesome, awesome. The affiliate option, does that require a yearly fee? Or do you just have to stay a premium member?
Just have to stay a platinum.
A platinum.
Yep. So you'll just have to be a platinum member. So as long as your account is actively platinum, you will be eligible for the program. So just like Young Living, if you stop ordering, right? If you stop being an ordering member, then you can't participate as a business builder, same concept. So as long as you're fluid with your account, you're good to go.
Excellent. All right. Lori and Heidi, you had questions about how you see what plan you're on? How do you convert your subscription? Definitely reach out to Grow Workspace Support for that directly so that they're able to walk you through that or, you know, maybe comment in the Facebook group or something to that effect. So awesome. Was there anything else that you would like to add or share with us before you get back to what I'm sure is a ton of work on top of a power outage?
I think just with that last comment of what you were saying, if you, I believe you can go into your account now and click on your little gray silhouette. And I think that it will tell you what plan you're on. It will in the new version, for sure. And maybe if you hit credit card, I think it will tell you. But if you do need to know, the girls are gonna hate me for this, but you can send an email to support to ask. But, you know, if you're getting class content every single month, not just the newsletter, but class content, you are on a plan that will be upgraded. So if you already know, like, yes, I just got access to this, the this or that holiday game that we just released. If you just got access to that, you're good.
Okay. All right, guys. Remember getoiling.com/grow, G R O. Get yourself onto premium now at monthly or annual so that you are grandfathered in. You guys are gonna be adding free accounts. That's so huge to help you grow your business. And, oh my God, and just so much added to this, so much value here. And they've made it easier for you to navigate. You can still click just a couple of buttons and have everything pulled over that you want into your Get Oil-ing account. So getoiling.com/grow, so yeah, thank you so much for being here today. And good luck with everything that you're doing there with the launch. We look back, look forward to having you back here again soon.
Yes, awesome. Thank you, Ashley, for having me. And I can't wait to do even more training, education, resources, partnership with Get Oil-ing down the road. You guys, this is, we've been at this for three years. It almost feels like that was just the beginning. And like this year to come with, you know, Grow 2.0 and everything to come, like, it's endless. And it's gonna be so amazing and impactful for your businesses and your lives.
Yeah, this is so huge. Yeah, we look forward to it. I know we've got like several things on the list that we've just kind of been pinging back and forth about, like, we could do this, we could do this. So guys, understand, there's always more to come, both, you know, from what they're delivering to you and what we plan to do together. So yeah, thank you again, Christy.
All right, we'll see you guys.
Thanks, Christy. This is huge. Yeah, sorry, talked over you. Yeah, thanks. This is huge. It's been great having you on today. Really appreciate you sharing all this exciting stuff you've got coming up.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having me.
For sure.
Anytime, anytime. All right. So we are going to move over to a reminder, actually, of some site updates. We showed you these last week. I just want to make sure that everyone here knows about them. Maybe just a quick show of hands, how many of you here right now have gone in and used or tested out the templates, the page templates or the section templates inside of your custom pages in Get Oil-ing? We got a lot of hands up here. Okay, cool. So this is something that's new. It's growing. There's more of this coming. But I want to encourage you guys, if you're using these, to get in touch with us, show us, you know, if you've got like ideas about sections of a page that you would love an example of, you know, instead of just staring at a blank page or trying to come up with something out of the ether, having something there to start with. Greg, do we have a, like a John or Jane account that we could show that in real quick? Just to make sure everybody knows what we're talking about?
I have it ready. I think you need to make me co-host here, but then I can share out the screen.
Awesome. Thank you. You are now co-host.
Fantastic. All right. Let's see here. There we go. Okay. Just a quick refresh on these new templates from last week. People are wondering, we get questions throughout the week, like, where are these templates? So these are in the page builder. If you haven't used those, those are under my site settings. Whoops, here, let me stop the old screen share, stop the video here. Okay, so my site settings and then come to custom pages over here. And then whenever you create a new page, there's the number of new templates that show up here. So you can still see the ones we had before, you know, the photo gallery personal info. But there's a number of these ones that are a little more graphically oriented that are here, kind of the newer templates. So any of these are pretty, you know, they're, I think, design wise, they're a step above certainly what was there before. But like, for example, I'll click on one of these and these, you know, these are all fully editable. You can click in there and change whatever you want to do. You can swap out the photo with your own photo. You know, put the back, edit this basically however you'd like. So, and some of these actually, you can't see that in the editor, but when you view the actual pages, it does have some of that neat, what's it called, parallax effect on the back of them. You know, so when you're scrolling there. So for example, let's see if I can, I can't remember. Let me see which, there's one of these pages that actually has some of that. Yeah, so here's, here's what actually, one of the templates, if I go back here quick and make, this is this new template called homepage. That is, you can see it's, you know, here it is. I do have it actually like in the, I haven't saved this because it was just created, but this is what it looks like when it's actually saved. And as you can see, there's some nifty little background parallax fun stuff going on here where the text slides at a different rate than the background. So yeah, there's lots of cool stuff in these themes. There's about, what is it? About eight or nine of these. And you can find them in a list. Been working on some more as well, which aren't out yet. But, you know, hopefully you'll see those here in the coming weeks. Yeah. So if you want to find those new templates, go into here on a create page, browse around, find the one that fits kind of what you're looking for and then customize them and go from there. So yeah, exciting stuff. We've been getting good feedback on these, saying these are a little bit easier to use than some of the older ones. So that's exciting too. And we also have some other changes hopefully coming soon to the page builder to make it even a little bit more easy to use. So anyway, with that, back to you, Ashley.
Awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that. We see some people who are excited about this. I definitely look forward to seeing you guys use these. And of course, you know, where you have requests, I mean, understand every single feature of our platform. Well, not every single one, but like the vast majority of the features on this platform came as a direct result of someone like you using the system saying, I really wish it would do this thing. And then Greg waves a magic wand as we, if you don't know yet, you will come to know. So, so yeah, please use these, give your feedback and help us help you and make them better. So let's move on over into some site reviews. Cassandra, if you could raise your hand for me, I'm going to review with you first. Hey, come on out and chat with us. How's it going?
Hi. It's going good.
Good, good. I'm gonna share my screen here and show the link that you've shared with me. Tell me a little bit about what you are hoping to, you know, get some feedback on today or what your goals are.
Um, really, my goal is just to make it more, so I had done the Icon Training, which kind of focused on a broader, a broader brand than just Young Living. So I wanted to try and bring a little bit of that into my website. I still want it mostly to focus on Young Living because that's how it's going to get me to where I want to be with my brand. But I would like to maybe be able to add in some things. And I don't think I really realized what the templates were for, the page templates, and how I would use those.
Yeah, yeah. So let's see, if we move over here, I think this is, okay. So what you've got is you have branded, you've got a nice little logo here and you've edited your fonts, which is great. And you're using, oops. Oh, I see. I clicked the little button there and I guess it doesn't let me go back to the landing page since I clicked it, right? Greg, is that right? When we have it set up that way?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I was.
Yeah, yeah. So when I went to her page originally, and this is a function, you guys, just so you know, like, this is actually something that when you set up your Get Oil-ing site, you can have this like done, it's already done for you immediately, what you're looking at here. But what Cassandra had was a, there was a landing page on her homepage URL. And I clicked the no thanks, don't want to register part. And now I'm here, but I can't really go back.
Right, yeah. Once you've registered or bypassed it, the landing page doesn't show up again on that device. At least if you have it set up as your homepage, that's, that is by design. You know, just so that you don't have to reregister every time to get into the homepage.
Got it. Okay.
You can, if you have a standalone landing page, then it will show up every time if it's not the homepage of your site.
Okay, perfect. So Cassandra, what I recommend doing with, this is one of our built-in themes. And it's actually, it's imported your branded colors, which is great. But what you can do with this is actually use it as a business tool. And what I mean by that is specifically, when you are out in whatever circumstance you may be in, you know, warm market, conversations with people on social media, you know, someone that you know from, you know, from church or whatever. And you get to the point where you're going to share Young Living with them or you're going to like actually sit down and have a prospecting conversation with someone. This is the tool that I would recommend that you use to actually facilitate that. So when you set an appointment with someone and they're like, yeah, I want to learn more about what you know and what you have to share and how it can help me, then what you do is you say, okay, let's set up a time. Here's what you're going to do. And then you send them to your site, the way you have it set up right now or to that link if you eventually have a different homepage for your site. And I would actually, I would remove the, allow people to bypass.
I'm sorry, one second.
It's okay.
I am talking. Stop.
We are, um.
Sorry, homeschooler.
Most of us are parents here, and I think most parents here are homeschooling right now too, whether they set out to do that in life or not.
Yeah. She's gonna be quiet this whole time.
I know. It's like, wait, until mom has got like a phone on the ear or is doing, yes, I know. It's like a beacon. It's like, oh, hey, it's time. Anyway, so what you want to do is I would remove the option to bypass. And what that means is, is that people, in order for them to get to this next page where they can learn about the opportunity and where they can like actually dig in and click off and learn about essential oils and all of this kind of stuff, you want them to have put themselves into your system. I mean, if somebody is not willing to do that, they're not really willing to like listen to anything else you have to say either, right? So I mean, that's, that's a pretty immediate sort of like, this is a barrier to entry. If you're not willing to cross this, then we're probably not ready for the next step. So, so yeah, what I would do is I would have them enter their information there. And then, you know, basically direct them to peruse this page, to watch the videos on it and for them to learn more because this tells them lots of stuff, you know, pursue the things that they find most interesting. And then you sit down together and you have a conversation about any questions that they have. And then, of course, you can walk through the starter kits and things like that to help them get started. You can go through this page with them via Zoom or on the phone. Alternatively, although not as effective, you could also, you could also just give them that link where they register themselves, they look through this, and then you follow up with them. Not quite as effective as using an appointment. But that's what I would use these, our built-in website themes for, is for that purpose. Now, what you want to eventually move toward, you know, since you have worked on your personal brand and you sort of know like the content and the messaging and everything behind it, and I assume you may have been blogging.
I've been trying, yeah.
Yeah, excellent. Now, you're not trying, honey. You're doing, this is great. And you're creating images, which is awesome. Oh my goodness, you've got like your own, look at you. Look at you with your logo on your YouTube channel and your DIY YouTube video for laundry soap. You're getting it. This is great. All right. So what you're gonna want to do, you know, when you're able to get to that point, are you, are you in Go for Gold?
No, I'm not.
Okay. It's a worthwhile investment to walk you through all the steps, although we've got lots on our YouTube channel if you want to learn different ways for free that are already accessible to you. But when you create your own homepage, what you're able to do is generate even more curiosity, right? So when you have a custom homepage, they land there, you know, your leads land there and they see, oh, well, this is this person. And if they know from what you say there that you are someone who helps someone like them, they will immediately say, oh, tell me more. And this is where your lead magnet comes in, right? This is like where the funnel comes in. But what you're able to do as well, and you could just do this now, is when you're on social media, you take these posts that you make on your blog and you share them. You say, hey, I made a blog post. It's about this. Here is, you know, here's where you can find it.
Okay.
And you share the link. And so this, this just, it kind of creates an opportunity for people to see that you aren't just here to sell the oils, right? You are here because you care very deeply about the causes and about the outcomes that you're looking for. It's something we explored together in the Personal Branding Intensive. And you're calling out to those people who resonate with that. And you're showing them how they can improve their lives and you're giving them tools to do it. And when you are providing that value to them first, improving their life first before asking them to make a purchase from you, the trust factor increases greatly, right? Like the likelihood of someone to do something with the information that you're giving them, to say yes and to purchase and to become a Young Living member, that becomes much higher. You are, you're nurturing a lead, right? You're developing and nurturing leads there. So, so yeah, for now, what I would say is obviously continue blogging and share these things that you are, like these links to your blogs. So you take this little share link here and you can send it out, you know, to these different platforms. Take this photo and put it, like pin it and then connect it to this blog. And then start thinking about how you can create a funnel and some of the ways that we've talked about on Weekly Work Session or if you wanted to follow the steps in Go for Gold, which really is, I mean, that is the most comprehensive step by step through everything because we teach you how to set stuff up and get oiling with it. But if you, you know, you have a funnel, let's just say, for instance, where at the bottom of this, you know, here's my Halloween diffuser recipes. Maybe down at the bottom here, you say, you know, I've cracked the code on, you know, on getting the house clean without toxic ingredients in 20 minutes a week without spending a fortune. You know, here, click here to get my guide, my ebook, my whatever to get that, right? And then, of course, if this is your person and that's the kind of thing that they want, they're gonna get, they're gonna get on your list. And once people do that, they opt in, you know they're a lead for you. That's someone you can go have a conversation with about Young Living right now. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That's kind of how it all connects together. So awesome. I would love to see you, I would love to see you put together, using the language that you pulled together in the Personal Branding Intensive and how to talk about yourself. I would love to see you make that into a homepage on your website, maybe using some of the themes that we have. And then, of course, you've got the opportunity from there to link off to your blog, which, you know, you've got here already in your menu. But you can link off to your blog, you can link off to using Leg Builder links. You can link off to the different themes. So if you want to have a page that talks about body systems that you want to send a lead to for Young Living, or if you want to, you know, maybe you know somebody that's interested in pets. that you want to send a lead to for Young Living, or if you want to, you know, maybe you know somebody that's interested in pets and like how they can use essential oils with pets, then use the animals theme, right, the pets theme. And have that link, you know, it could be in your menu, or you could just have it ready to grab and then, you know, share when it's time to share with the person who's ready to see it.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm excited for you and proud to see you putting this logo to you, because I love the colors in it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you have, do you have any other questions?
You had mentioned, uh, when I'm on the Lead page, to remove that option of opting out. How does that? I guess my question is, because like, maybe there's something wrong with my computer, I don't know. But every time I go in, it brings me to that page. So in order for me, myself, to get to my own homepage, my own website, I would have to put in my information every time. You know, every time I have to click, no, I'm not interested in order to get to my own website.
I see. Okay.
I'm afraid, I don't want people have, like, I don't want 20 Joe Smiths, because every time he goes to my site, he can't get in. Is there?
Got you. Greg?
Maybe I'm totally doing something wrong.
I mean, it shouldn't work that way. It should just be that once they, you know, once they register once on it, and it's device and browser specific, like, you know, if you're registering on your phone, that won't obviously affect your computer. But like, once you've registered on your computer, it should not come up again. So, I mean, there might be, you know, I don't, I don't know if that, that didn't happen here from the looks of things. So it might be something specific, maybe try another browser and see if that's the case. It may just be some little anomaly. You know, if not, certainly reach out to support. We can maybe dig into a little bit more about what's going on there and help out.
Yeah. And I think also importantly, just from a strategic perspective, as your website is right now with your homepage going to the theme, it's best until you have a custom homepage that's branded to you, that you use that as a sharing tool. And so people wouldn't have to, like, people wouldn't necessarily be going back to it and going back to it and going back to it, because they'd be going for a specific purpose around a specific activity that you have ideally scheduled with them because they're a prospect. So, so it isn't something that, you know, you wouldn't wind up getting 20 John Smiths, because John's probably only going to go there the one time when you. Oh.
Oh, I thought it was just me. There we go. Ashley, you back?
Oh, yeah, I'm here. Hi. Sorry. Okay. So, so yeah, you wouldn't have 20 John Smiths. John Smith would come, you know, once or twice. And it would be around, you know, your specific conversation with this person who wanted to see the information and then follow up with you on it. So, yeah, yeah. So right now, it's going to be a really helpful tool for business. It becomes something that is more conducive to lead generation and you, you know, organically having people find you online. When you're putting content out like you're doing now, please keep doing what you're doing with YouTube. Do stuff like this as often as you can, because that kind of helpful content that shows people how to get a benefit that you know how to get yourself that they don't know yet, like, that's the kind of stuff that builds trust for people. And then, of course, once your website is branded fully to you, they go to your website and they say, oh, wow, she helps people just like me. I guess I should subscribe and like get this thing that she's giving away. You know, those are your perfect leads. And that's kind of what we're working toward to set up.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So as you continue through this process, keep coming back and let's talk about the progress that you're making. If you have any issues along the way, feel free, reach out. Schedule yourself for another one of these. We can look over it together. And yeah, just make sure that everything's flowing the way that you want it to.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being willing to share with us today and being here.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I cut you off. You're welcome. And thank you. All right. So next we have Kimberly Nelson. Are you here? Would you raise your hand for me, please? So we can get you started. I'm going to try to find you here. All right, Kimberly, I'm going to bring you out. And let's take a look at your website. You can unmute yourself to chat with us. All right. Are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Hi, how's it going?
Oh, it's good. It's good. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, tell me a little bit about what you're looking for here and what your goals are.
You know, I just, I'm not very computer-wise, very good at the computer. I just, yeah, to be a better savvy at this and to be out there. I applaud the other girl that you just reviewed. I don't, I'm very nervous about being on video and stuff like that. So I'm just, you know, so, and actually doing a reboot with my business. I walked away from it because of some hurt, and now I'm just trying to get back into things. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyway.
Okay, great. Well, so, so let's, let's talk about what you want to create then. So what are, what would you like for this to do for you? What would you like to see happening?
You know, talking about funnels, I do sail quite a bit. And so I don't know how to, you know, create that. You know, that would be with something I enjoy, like, you know, sailing, or I am very, you know, I'm a strong Christian, and so I don't know if that would be something I could put in here or not. I don't know if that would turn people off. But those are some of the things that I enjoy. I enjoy sailing and I enjoy my faith. So, but I've been afraid to share that because of being judged.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Well, let's, let's get into that. So, so here's the thing. Where you have something, and this, you guys, this is brand coaching. If you want to learn, I think there might be an issue with my internet. Please let me know if you can't hear me. All right. So, so let's talk about this. No matter who you are, what your views are, or how controversial you may think that they are, the worst thing that you can do is dampen your light. Worst thing you can do. It is better for you to repel people who are turned off by things that light you up than for you to try to attract people through the lens of not being yourself fully. You should be fully yourself. You should be bravely and proudly yourself, because it is going to attract people who need that, who need that energy, who need permission to be more of themselves. People can sniff out inauthenticity quite easily. We know when we're talking to someone who's being real and when we're talking to someone who's, oh. What about now?
Yeah, I think she disappeared. If it's like last time, she'll be on in about 10 seconds.
How about now? Am I here? Super weird. All right. So I'm going to take this off, because we've, we've got a, you've got one of our themes on here. So I'm just going to talk. Hopefully, the not having the screen share might lessen the complication. Not sure. It's raining in the woods today. Maybe that's an internet problem. Anyway, so what I was going to say, or try to complete saying here, is that no matter what it is that you're into, if you feel that it's controversial, I would actually err on the side of leaning into it. Because you want to attract more people who share the values that you do. Those people who share values with you are looking for more people like them. So if you become a beacon to those people, you're going to build a fulfilling and bountiful community and list of leads of people who want to be around you. And that's ultimately what you want. So anyone who would have an issue with your beliefs, they're not someone who has any business with your business. Could they be somewhere in your downline? Yeah, totally. That's fine. But they won't be your personals. I mean, your personals should be people who you personally want to feel connected with, right? Does that make sense?
Looks like the rain took out our internet again.
Oh, my gosh, you guys. This is crazy.
Too bad. There we go. You're back.
And so I guess just, Kimberly, can you catch me up on what you got from me?
Yeah, to be the true authentic self and not to be afraid. Actually saying that makes me want to cry. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You, you deserve to have that openness and to shine the light that you have. And there are people out there right now who need to hear that from you. So it's not just sailing, and it's not just your faith. There's the why behind those things, right? What does it do for you? There's, there's freedom, there's fulfillment. There's something that you know how to get, how to have, that other people value, that they don't know how to get themselves. And if you can be yourself and show people how they can make their lives better in the way that you've made yours better, then you're going to build trust and, and you're going to, you're going to reap the benefit, because that is a worthwhile thing to sow, right?
She's freezing again.
Oh, you guys. I wonder, I wonder if I, if I turn off my video, if maybe that will help like not get the freeze on. This is kind of crazy. We're, I'm not in the city anymore, and we've had pretty good wifi. But, but yeah, it's been a little tricky when it rains, apparently. So, all right. I really hope that you're able to, you know, get something from what I'm saying, because I'm saying a lot, but I don't know how much of it is not being heard.
Yeah, I'm hearing you. Thank you.
Okay, okay, good. So what I would encourage you to do, do you have access to any of the trainings that we talk about on these work sessions? Or like, are you, are you brand new to Get Oiling?
I've been with Get Oiling for at least a year, at least a year. And I pay the higher price, whatever it is. So I think I do. I just need to step into that. And I don't know where to find them. Is there a certain place where you can find them?
Well, so there's, there's a couple of things.
Previous recordings?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, those are actually on youtube.com/GetOiling, all these weekly trainings.
Okay.
And there's, there's a little question mark down at the bottom of your, of your screen when you're logged in. That'll show you as well. Like, you can search anything that you want to know. And of course, you can join us on any of these live sessions.
Awesome. I appreciate it.
Yeah. And if you, Go For Gold is something that you'll see us recommending here frequently. It's a program that we, we co-created material for it with Martha Crecci. She went to gold in six months in Young Living. And, and so what we did was we translated her methods into using our platform. And so it actually teaches you the tech stuff along with the strategy. That's definitely something worth checking out as well, and that is getoiling.com/goforgold. And if you use the code VITALITY, it'll get you a pretty significant discount on that. So that's, that's also one that has a great supportive community and really walks you step by step through everything that you need to know to make the most of our system. And then, of course, I mean, so much on our YouTube channel, like, you could also just watch our YouTube videos. But, but yeah, we're, we're so grateful to have you here. And, and in terms of, you know, just getting things set up, I would really start with thinking about who you want to empower. And, and, you know, and by extension, who you want to attract. Who do you want in your business? What kind of person do you want in your business and in your life? You know, who else do you want at the dinner table with you, on vacation with you? Those are the people you want to attract as your personals. And so you want to, you know, you want to talk to them, talk to them with your content, talk to them with your about section on your website. And be fully yourself, because there are people out there who don't have the strength or the bravery that you do, who need to hear those things from you and who need permission from seeing someone else thriving and moving about in the world in a way that you know how to. You just can't, yeah, you can't be, you can't be bothered by the opinions of people that have no business in your business.
Okay. Thank you.
And please come back and share with us the work that you're doing as you progress. We'd be really excited to see what you come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And I'm really sorry about cutting out so much.
Okay.
All right. We've got some, oh, Paula, thank you for pitching in here. Agree with going bold with your faith. Just recently took my own advice and posted a photo on my About page that says Jesus is Lord in the background and feels so blessed about it. Wonderful. You've got a lot of hugs and comments here for you, Kimberly. I hope you're reading the chat. We're grateful to have you here. You should be strong in your faith and strong in your beliefs, no matter what they are, because you want to build a community of people who you want to be around and who would want to be around you. And that's, that's really, that should be the, the drive at the end of the day is to serve your people. So don't change yourself, because you're not going to attract who you want if you're putting out the signal for somebody else's people. So attract yours. Proud of you and excited to see what you do. All right. So we've got some questions here. And I want to get through these. Hopefully, I don't cut out. Please stop me, Greg, and answer, I guess, if they, if I do. Thank you. All right. Tessa says, on the blog, the list along the right side, is it best to have images with the titles or without? When in doubt, where blogs are concerned, it is ideal to have thumbnails wherever you can.
You're cutting out.
Here we go.
I don't know if you can hear me or not.
I can, yeah.
You're back.
Okay. Am I back? This is crazy.
You're back. Yep.
It's not even telling me on my screen that there's issues is the weird thing. Usually it'll pop up and say that there's, that there's something going on. So, all right. So Tessa, it's better to err on the side of having images wherever possible, especially where you're talking about an article with lots of text. This, this isn't going to sound great, but you know how children love picture books? Adults on the internet do too. So, so include pictures. It's going to increase your engagement. All right. Susan, how do we get our brand colors on the built-in theme? That is going to be under your Customize My Site, where you can add your custom colors and custom fonts and the like. We've got several videos on our YouTube channel that teach you how to brand your sites. Anonymous, I am paralyzed by overwhelm. Any suggestions? So what I would encourage you to do is to simply start. Obviously, if you've got specific goals, then, then I would break those up and pick one thing and get one thing done at a time. But just.
It's cutting out again for you, unfortunately. Hopefully, you can.
Thanks.
Hear me. I don't know if you can hear me while this is happening. There we go. Okay, you're back.
Okay, yeah, no, I hear you clearly. Every time you tell me I'm cutting out, and it's weird. So what I would say is, if you're paralyzed by overwhelm, is to, is to just start using the platform to make your life a little easier. Use it to help remind you to follow up with leads. Use it to organize your contacts and send out your, you know, your broadcast and educational stuff to your members. Like, just start working on, on the member side and on the internal side. And as you start feeling confident and seeing places that you can create more leverage in your life and in your business, then start using us for those things as well. But if anything else, just start with the organizational features with the contact manager and make your life and business run a little more smoothly and a little easier before you start getting into the creative side of things, right? We, we are engaged on both sides of the brain in terms of what we do with our platform. So pick the one that is the lane that makes the most sense to you, that's easiest for you to do, and just start with that. Always go with the easy road first and get good at it, and then start adding on a new thing. All right. I realize this may not be on topic, but I've been trying for weeks in my spare time to figure out how I can read the default campaigns before selecting them to send out to my contacts. Can you direct me as to how to do this? So on any of the campaigns, when you click on them, you can actually open up and see the individual images. If you want to see them inside of your actual email, what, what you could do is basically figure out which of these, and you do have to copy this over into your own, you have to duplicate it, because you can't edit the built-in campaign. But copy it over and change all of the dates to zero so that they deliver right away, and then send that campaign to yourself. Then you could see what they look like. All right. Rhonda, miss the webinar. Where can I re-watch it? We will send this out to you if you're signed up at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We'll also have this up on our YouTube channel by the end of today. And Susan, is there a section in Get Oiling on what to put in our About Me, like an outline? I need guidance on what to put there. Success Leaves Clues, I would go to the FAQ section on our website and see some examples of some amazing Get Oiling websites, see how people are talking about themselves. And also, I would, just from a brand perspective, a personal brand perspective, think about people who aspire. Great. Let me know when you can hear me again.
We'll see you when you're back. We'll see you when you're back.
Oh my goodness, this is ridiculous.
There we go. You're back.
Thanks. All right. So, um, so Susan, um, you should also take a look at the people who inspire you, uh, whether they're on our platform or not. Uh, I would even encourage you to look at folks who aren't even in Young Living. You know, people who are talking to the audience that you want to be getting in front of. Think about the people you subscribe to. Go to the about section on their website. Success leaves clues here. It's not, uh, an exact science, but you can make it your own. If you go look at what's working well for others. So I believe that's it. Uh, thank you guys so much for all of the great questions. Uh, sorry about my internet. Super weird. But I think that the recording should be really interesting, actually, because I'm recording it to my computer. So you're going to hear me talking perfectly clearly and then repeating myself when you pop in, Greg, and say, hey, hey, can't hear you. So this, this should be interesting. Um, glad we made it through the super important parts. A little bit unscathed. Um, Chrissy didn't get any interrupts really. So, all right. Excellent. Uh, you guys, getoiling.com/grow, G R O. You want to take advantage of what they're doing right now. Um, and, and get yourself sort of grandfathered in there with Grow Workspace. You won't regret it. Um, and there's so much more to come in terms of how we can show you how to use their content.
It's like you're cutting out again.
Okay.
There we go. We're almost at the end. We're almost there.
We're almost there. We're, we are there actually. All right. So we, we love you guys and we thank you so very much for being here. And, um, Nina confused on the difference. We thought we were similar. We are, okay, so, um, the subscription needed in Get Oiling to get Grow Workspace. Uh, we recommend basic to start Get Oiling. You can use us and Grow Workspace together, no matter what plan you're on with us. Uh, we recommend that you get their premium now, um, because that, of the changes that Chrissy just shared. But, um, we are, we are not the same. We are symbiotic. We work very well together. Uh, we provide the framework and the, and the machine for you to use the content they create. So they got the creative stuff and you can use our tech stuff to get it to your people. So they solve the what do I talk about, uh, side of the equation and we solve the how do I get it to people? How do people see it? So what problem solved? Two sides. Glad you got it. All right. Excellent. Thank you guys. Sorry for the internet again. It'll be better next week, I hope, and we'll see you guys soon.
See everybody.